Hey there and welcome to the weed out where we weed out all the bullshit and talk about the ghouls in our backyard. Maybe applies to your backyard Spencer Fox Peterson and I'm with my partner as always Joanna may booty.
Hi, everybody.
We're here doing our usual thing. You know, last time you heard from us, you were heard us. Give us interview each other pretty rudimentarily to also introduce ourselves. So we hope you enjoyed those episodes there. They're kind of timeless in the sense you can always go back. So if you missed it, no big deal. But as always, please follow us on social media and follow us on your favorite podcast player and leave a rating and review. If you have the time, that'd be excellent. Check us out on Patreon at the weed outright Joanna is at our handle on on Patreon.
Yes, and also subscribe to our sub stack. So you'll know like when we send anything out.
Yeah, we try to be, uh, we've, we've posted a bunch of things on our sub stack from calls to action activism. We're posting an op ed. We'll get more into that later in the show. That has also been submitted to other publications locally, but we'll definitely get it out on our feed. So no matter what it's out there for the record, it's regarding the first amendment and public comment. Follow us on social media, interact with us, give us some feedback. We'd always love to hear from you, but today we're gonna, you know, now that business side is over, we're going to get into the last couple of Holyoke City Council meetings since the last time we spoke about the council. On 10 for October 4th, 2022, where the shot spotter meeting and the public comment and how things kind of went off the rails. We're seeing a pattern of uh, Joanna, maybe you could describe it better. We're seeing a pattern inside the Holyoke City Council chambers. And it doesn't feel good. So maybe Joanna, I'd love you to color that a little bit.
Yeah, um, thank you. It is a pattern and I think it is not specific to Holyoke based on some responses we've one response even we've had from a local publication just saying like, this is important, but the basically the pattern is that there is tension and a back and forth between some of the counselors and some of the other counselors, um, most of the white older counselors and some being having issues with some of the people who are not white people or who have different backgrounds and who are younger. So I think there's definitely a problem there. And like we wrote in our app ed and the planning boards had sent a letter about this as well. It's not just amongst each other, which everyone definitely is able to witness and we will share some clips. But it's also like the way that some of the counselors treat people speaking for public comment. So and how they even react to public comment in general. So these are not isolated incidences. These are things that we see, I think, from certain members of the Holyoke City Council again, like white older members of the council consistently. And we are not the only ones noticing and pointing it out. And I think it's worth continuing to talk about. Because I think some of the counselors are at this point sitting in meetings and I'm, I don't think it's the white older counselors. It's the ones who are taking and hearing these words that are often not kind. They're very
Said civilly as we've talked.
Yes, they're, they're said in a nice tone and there is, they think they're being civil, but the things that they're saying could be looked at as attacks of people's care of people's care, lot of dog whistling type things. Um, and these may not be intentional, but yeah, microaggressions for sure. And even if they're not intentional, like you can see that some of the people on the council are having a hard time being there sometimes. So, and then people coming to public comment are like nervous to make public comments. So I think the letter from the planning board plus just watching every meeting lately has really, it's warranted a second, a second episode where we just talk about, okay, so we have this group of people calling for civility and then basically, I don't know, it almost feels like intimidating other members of the council even into feeling like they have to defend themselves or that there's consistently attacks. And again, we can share a clip of some of this. But I just, I understand where those counselors are coming from because even as a member of the public, I'm nervous to speak based on how the some of the counselors might react. There's a lot of tension and it seems like it's very difficult for them to all get along.
And, and I just want to also chime in here for people that don't know much about what's going on here. Joanna mentioned the age gap and the, you know, the divide of possible like, you know, race, you know, white, white and Puerto Rican, um, non-white and non-whites, you know, lumped all in the same boat. And there's also a class divide here. Um, so this is where we should all kind of should see some solidarity. And I think there are counselors that are also caught in the middle.
I do too. And there are some like, there are some
They're crying and I like, you know, they're, these are people that have to deal with it every day or whatever during work. And so there's a toxic work environment is what I'm getting at.
That's what it feels like for them, like for the ones that are feeling really hit by it. It feels toxic for sure.
And there's, there's, there's people sitting on the sideline like, you know, like Tessa who's seems like a very nice person, but they're one person on the council and they're trying their best. From what I can see in the public, you know, sphere, the recorded places where she kind of yelled at Kevin when he said that out of pocket stuff about Israel.
Oh, yes, I would say, and that's why I said older white, not to be rude to anyone who like, Tessa seems a little bit on the younger edge of things.
Let's not, not everybody's gonna be everybody's cup of tea.
For sure. We're not always all friends for sure.
She was very gray, but it there's, you can tell there's tension and, um, other departments or other people with
Yeah, like it's not, it's bad in my opinion. Because if you
We shared, I believe we shared this.
We did share the letter on our last, um, the last time we spoke about this. The city council on our October 4th meeting, we can share it again. I mean, it's just think about it like a group of people who you work with within the city are coming to speak to you. And one member refuses themselves and decides to speak in public comment and is treated horribly horribly enough for the chair of that board to send a letter to the entire council. So again, for me, I think the mayor should be like really involved in trying to get these members of each count. I mean, clearly there needs to be a training or a bunch of trainings on even just what civility means because just because you say things in a nice calm tone, it does not mean that it's okay. And I think this is the city council is one of those. And there are so many examples across America, different city councils, which is horrible. But to focus on this one specifically, I think is important because they're not learning from meeting to meeting, it just continues to be a toxic work environment. So again, who will all of these members who are feeling this way even want to come back? Is it kind of a way to keep people who I don't know, aren't falling in line with the status quo out of the, out of the city council, because it's so hard to sit there with these other members. You know what I mean?
Um, yeah.
And I'm not saying it's intentional. It just, it just feels, I wouldn't want to sit there.
The powers that be, the established families, the business interests, whatever you want to call it. I, I don't think there's a big conspiracy. It's just human nature and hierarchy. This is why hierarchy is dangerous because you get consolidations of power and then, you know, they're you know, for example, I like, maybe this is a good segue. Uh, one of the issues they were talking about in the last two sessions is regarding the ward one counselor who has been put under indictment.
Oh, yes.
And they're trying to end for a, uh, on a case within a minor. So very serious. But you know, it's, we're in the accusation phase, you know.
Exactly. They have not faced their time. They haven't had their day in court yet.
And this person also hasn't been available to do their duties. So they're trying to figure out as a council what to do. So there's been a request, I believe it was by Linda vacant to see what legal can do, what to consult legal to see what they can do as far as removing him, uh, electing somebody else, like all the, that's the way I'm understanding it.
Yeah, like all the options that they have because it does leave them like they were without a counselor for 90 days, I think it was. And then they, I, I think like, we can leave the clip where Linda explains herself to like, I do understand wanting to know what to do. Um, I just think you can go right ahead with where you're going with this.
I feel the, you know, reading the, the white supremacy dog whistles personally. And again, these things are so baked in to our society.
Exactly.
It's, I, I want to remove the personnel, the interpersonal, the, the personal level here. Like I have my opinions about counselor vacant and counselor Jordan, and I've made them very clear, but these things, they're not doing anything crazy. Like, you know, it's very, we're very normalized with the frog in the pot of water. Where you don't even realize like how violent or insinuating the line of questioning is. And when you see the double standards and how they're applied, it's like, oh, you're really in a rush with figuring out what to do with the brown guy who represents the next class and he's the, the exception, you know, to all the other great younger politicians coming up counselors, right? It's all kind of a big chess game move to make it really uncomfortable to exist. And it's very aggressive, but they, you know, they don't deal with officers getting DUIs out in the, you know, and in trying to use their status with the department to skate trouble. Uh, that can be fact checked. That's, I believe, mass live the gazette. Everybody reported on that about a year ago. We'll post that in the link because that's a salacious story because it is in like, but you know, you, you just kind of see it also. We'll play the clip and then we'll talk about it.
Oh yeah. So this clip is from the October 18th meeting and I'm going to play, um, Juan Anderson Burgos. So that's word six, right Spencer?
Yeah, that's actually my word.
Yeah. So, and it's Juan's reaction.
I've known one a, uh, personal and, uh, well, personal in the sense that he's my counselor, like my neighbor, but, um, like a professional sense, like we worked at a corporate bank together years ago. Uh, he worked at a different branch, but you know, we bumped elbows. But that was about the extent of our relationship. Since most of our relationship, he's been my counselor. I happened to just move into the ward. He already had a seat in. So, uh, and I don't agree with Juan on everything, um, personally, but I, I think he's a good a good man. And I think, uh, you know, you'll see where he's, he's very passionate in this clip and, um, yeah, I, I don't know what else to say.
Well, this, this, it's just, this is a good reaction, I think, to like his reaction is to that questioning about like what they can do. And I think he may seem really passionate if you didn't know the context, but I think it's because of how the interactions between the groups go so often that it's hard for him to not feel the way he feels. So I'm going to just let him do the talking.
Counselor Anderson Burgos. Counselor Jordan made a very good point. That you could see that the counselor or that one of the counselors within this body felt either attacked, left out. So then in the timing of it all, and if we're reading this, these orders, it would look like some kind of retaliation. I'm angry. You didn't sign with me. You didn't blah, blah, blah. And then all of a sudden here, I'm going to write this to get back at you. And the difference between, you know, here's how I see it. I did my things in the past, by the way, over 21 years ago. I did my time. I've corrected all my wrongs. I pay my taxes. I put myself through college. I busted my back to make things right. So the difference here, it says it. Does this apply to convictions of incumbents prior to taking office? That is directed at people such as myself and my fellow colleague here, Congressman Rivera. These are malicious. These are a waste of this body's time. We have so much to do in the city. And if we keep doing this towards, actually, no, I'm not going to say we, because I'm not part of this, right? Um, I don't file orders like this to take little jabs and stabs at, at people in this body. I don't do that. I try to work with you. And again, whether I agree or disagree with you, I work with you. I would never do this. This is, this is, this is a new level. This is like Game of Thrones kind of stuff here. This is not right. And the reason why I didn't say it earlier because as I'm reading, I'm like, it was a smack against my face. So if that answers your question, that's why I didn't mention it earlier, but whether, whether I mentioned it earlier or now, I'm mentioning it because it needs to be addressed. I was born and raised in the city. I will fight for this city to the end. I will make sure I point out the wrong and I'll keep doing it to my very last breath. This needs to stop her. And I hope that every person that goes out there and vote like are, are listening tonight. Share this, please share this with everybody in Holyoke. What is our city counselors talking about? What are they doing? Oh, are they lowering or raising our taxes? Are they keeping our, our, our streets safe? Are they making sure that the departments are, are fully staffed that, that they're taken care of? Our holy police department, are they staffed? Are they taking care of our fire departments? Are they staffed? Are they taking care of? No, we're writing, we're finding orders to take a little jab at each other. To remind us of our mistakes, to kick us while we're down. That's what these are for, the clear and day. So stop making it what it's not. That's what it is. It's intended, intended and malicious. Intended and malicious retaliation. That's it. Thank you.
So my quick reaction, uh, I guess is that's some powerful stuff. Uh, you don't really, again, you don't really see this kind of thing in small community government. Um, but and, and Juan is not, he's, he's a passionate person, but I genuinely looking at his track record and being at the meetings in the past, he's not this aggressive. He's definitely a, a center person, you know, he's a fulcrum of the room. Like he wants everybody to get along.
Well, and he said that he was like, I would hope you'd share this with your friends or the city because he's really wanting to get work done. He wants to work with people. He's, I am not even a resident of Holyoke, but you and I work together on things there and he's met even with both of us. He's someone I feel like I could reach out to. He's super upbeat on social media and friends with everyone. If he's like, um, if you find him there. So like, he's just a really easy to get along with individual overall, even if he, I think, even if he had a conflict, he would be easy to get along with. And I think he said that and he has every right to be mad if someone on the council, which I think it is cancer vacant and maybe cancer Jordan is kind of also giving that some, it sounds like some support. But I, I, I think that because in the past, counselor Jordan has thrown in Israel Rivera's face, um, being formally
Heard that in the, uh, in the episode four.
Yeah. So because he's throwing stuff like that in someone else's face, like this is why Juan's reacting that way. Like it's a way to attack them. And like he said, like they've paid their time. They've, they've done their time. They've paid their dues. Like what in the hell? Are you trying to basically do here? Like there are people who are paying taxes and voting members of society. And there are things like Juan said, this is a foolish, it's foolish. It's retaliatory behavior. And instead of putting orders through that actually help the community, they're putting through order, orders to kind of like continue inviting. So this just proves like even getting a, even getting a letter from an outside group doesn't help. So I don't know, other than having their mayor get involved and again, try to have like some explanations as to why people are allowed to treat others like that. I mean, some of this just seems, I can, I can see why he's so frustrated. Like these counselors sometimes meet for two hours or longer. Like he, he doesn't need to be sitting there getting these types of um, I understand why they would wonder what to do if someone were currently incarcerated and Juan understands that too. But in case anyone missed from the clip, like they're specifically asking like what to do about people who sit on council who have in the past been incarcerated. And that's why he is so upset and I understand completely.
And this is, this is the vicious cycle. This is how it all ties back to this, how this isn't inherently an abolitionist interest. And anybody that wants to do harm reduction, whether you're an abolitionist or not, um, we're hoping to convince you that, see, even if you do your time, you do your thing, you facilitate, you know, quote unquote, and you dig yourself up again. And you, you, you respond positively to this very, it, it, you're such an exception to the rule. So like, this is why we need to abolish these systems because we're also getting rid of people that can organize, that can lead, that can understand the needs of their community, you know, and there, this is just me being like, kind of, I guess maybe a little out there, but like, when somebody resorts to selling drugs or doing something that's, that would get you put in jail, uh, for the most part, the majority of things. They're not doing it for funsies. They're doing it to live, like
It's like purely survival based.
So I see, this is my cynical view. I see somebody that can like build a business and I'm like, huh. You can build, build a black market business and survive for a while, even with big daddy government, like spending a lot of money to end that business. You know, so it's like, that's something that should be acknowledged. I don't know how to say it because people take morality to being thrown into jail. And it's, and then again, it's like now they're somehow the last 20 years in between Juan's stuff and it's just messy. I don't know. It's just messy.
So I, I personally believe there should be at least one person on the council of every council that has at least been inside of a prison into some capacity other than a CEO or a warden. But in a, in either a work, a lower worker position, like an administrator, a social worker, or actually as an inmate. But that's because of my exposure on the ethics boards that I work on where we always have a prison advocate. Especially like because of if anyone wants to do any research on people who are incarcerated, even if it's probation, like those people have no will necessarily. So we try to make it so that the, the coercion levels to get someone involved in research are much lower. So I could see like, I mean, having people with that background are, it's actually very helpful. And like you said, Spencer, oftentimes they have wonderful skill sets. Um, I'm going to back that up too. Like, and oftentimes it's members of, they're all neighbors and members of our community too. Like I've shared in other episodes, I have at least two family members, maybe more that have been incarcerated and one that will maybe be incarcerated in the soon few, to be future. And I hope that prisons are abolished, um, for everyone. So like, for me, like, I just see these people as members of our community that should be there, especially if quote unquote, like you said, like they've served, they've served their time, they've paid their dues, which is usually what everyone's happy about at least. I do know in this, in this, um, meeting when Linda vacant does speak, she does kind of try to say that, but then and I'm not going to play the clip because people can go listen to it, but she basically, I'm going to summarize it like the point that sticks out to me, like I agree with her mostly, like what she's saying is what any reasonable person would say, except there's one line where she says like, yes, you have all like, you know, paid your dues and done your time and your, your, um, can good contributing members of the community and that's fine. And in my opinion, like, who is she? A judge and jury for everyone being a good member of a community? Like shut up. Like even if they got out and were a homeless, uh, unhoused individual, they still are fine people. So I just feel like there's still that hidden. And I guess this is your specialty, Spencer. I guess I feel like it's like a, it's like a micro aggression, small dog whistle to me. Where like at first I liked everything she was saying. And then I was like, wait a minute. Like when you come out of those situations and those institutions, it's so, it's so hard. Like you said, these people are exceptions like Izzy. Juan, these are exceptions to what can happen after you're incarcerated. So I just feel like saying like, and this is fine if you two are like this. It's just really like, I don't like it at all. It just doesn't sit well with me.
I'm gonna, it's akin to hidden law.
I don't like it.
Like, you know, like if you can, it's, it, the odds of you overcoming. Anyways, you're going to, I'm, I'm going to give the audience full warning on a back after this clip, I'm going to come in hot because like Joanna said.
Well, should we even play it though? Because I don't know if we need to, they can go listen on their own. Like I just feel like or should I guess I should play it.
Play it, play it. Cause then I'll, and I'll just be, uh, you know, politely, politely a dick. And this isn't about Linda or I mean, counselor vacant, excuse me. I don't want to disrespect.
No, it's about how it's said. So like for me, it's like
It sucks because it's so insidious. It's like in your head, you're like, hell, man.
Yeah. And I'm just like, I'm just like, oh, okay. Like she's trying. And then I'm like, no, no, you're not, you're not trying here. Cause, cause just the, I don't think she understands what she's saying, but I'm going to play it. I hope I have it queued up where it is.
I wish I'd heard a tenth of that passion in defense of due process for each and every American as each one of us is sitting in this room when we had two police officers in the chambers to keep a duly elected counselor from entering the chambers based on actions. Based on actions not endorsed, not even known by this council. That is, none of us knew. That is my whole point. That is why we were supposed to address this in executive session. But we did not do that as we were told we would do tonight. Now there is a distinction with absolutely no difference in my mind that we're going to talk about it on November 1st, but we couldn't talk about it on October 18th. Hence the orders, hence me signing on to it. Don't talk to me about how unfairly somebody is being treated when somebody who's accused not even had a trial doesn't meet the bare minimum of our legal due process. This is what's called a modern day lynching without the rope.
Stop, 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 stop. No, the counselor has the floor, the counsel.
To everybody respectfully. I have not interrupted a person. I've not made a face. I have not otherwise objected. But I do object when counselors in certain cases on their very own bring up at meetings their record. I have never personally brought up at any meeting, anybody's record. But what I do want clear is from our legal department who took an action based on their interpretation of our charter, which was found not to be correct. I want the rest of the questions answered so that we will be solid and standing on solid ground going forward. And we won't have to worry one way or the other. We will have the question answered. The question as a theoretical could potentially happen to anybody sitting in this chambers. If something happens and the person is convicted of something. So I think we need to understand if that happens, then what happens next? Maybe it's nothing. Maybe it's something. It's a reasonable question. And the compassion for people who have done things wrong, paid their price and redeemed themselves and participate in a constructive way in society is fine. So is asking a question about what the repercussions will be based on the actions that just happened. These are reasonable questions. You don't like the timing? I get it. But if the interpretation of what vacating a seat meant had been provided to us prior to the action being taken, maybe people on this council would have been able to bring the questions to light. And maybe the whole entire thing would have been avoided. But we did not get the advice of council. I heard nobody in this chamber object when counselor Givner filed the order seeking the resignation of a counselor because he had been absent. That was sent to legal for the legal opinion. Our president was quoted in the paper that legal would be giving us an opinion. The next thing we knew was the action had been taken without advantage or advice from legal to this council. That is why I signed on to the orders. I'm not out to get anybody. The counselor that I was talks about being a felon brings it up at every single meeting. I don't bring it up. The council brings it up himself. So you know, that's not the issue. The issue is what does our charter say and what does it mean? Thank you.
So there's that.
Wow, 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 wow. We, wow.
Right? Very exciting.
Very exciting. Um, so there was a billion.
There's so much. There's so much. There's so much there.
Myself, the local, listen, my mom's, I I'm my mother for all bless, bless her soul, bless her heart. Uh, is you know, we got rough, it's rough between the two of us and the squad as a whole, but like not a bad person for the world. And uh, her name's Karen, right? And
I love that.
My mom is difficult, but not in the way that Karens are difficult. And honestly, like.
So this is a Karen.
No, it's kind of like funny. It's like my mom is kind of, you know. She's a boomer. So you know, I would call her a boomer, not a Karen. It just happens to be her name's Karen. Anyway.
Well, right.
Sorry for the internet lingo, everybody. If you're not terminally.
But doesn't this seem more like a not your mom moment, but more of a Karen moment?
Petition the crowd that maybe we change the name to Linda. Specifically, we just make it a subsect of Karen. How about this? Subsect of Karen, where it's like the P. The counselor, the senator, you know, Marsha Blackburn from Tennessee.
Fair, I like this. We can do like a.
Yeah. So anyways, just just throwing that out there, but you know, I also.
So what do you think about her statements?
From a literal Karen. So I feel like when you're so close to that heartbeat for nine months, um, you know. I'm a white guy, so it's all good, you know, as far as when I act like a Karen or, you know. I try.
Don't be a Karen. You're not really ever a Karen. You're so nice.
Kind of get away with being Karens a little bit. Um, but you know.
Yeah, you could, but you're like two people that you should be nice to your, which I think are like workers and other solidarity to everyone. You are always one of the nicest, just.
Well, you know, when you've worked shit jobs, you get it like.
I know. I get it too. I'm always.
Want to be really helpful. You're kind of like, I want you to like. I don't want to be in your way at all. Just do your job.
Right. I don't want to be a bother is how I always feel. So I you're really kind of like that too. But what do you think about her statements? Like I was totally like right to be kind of like put off, right? Like woo, my god.
True, but she told on herself a bunch of times. So I.
Cause some of it seems like reasonable, but then she's like being a.
Well, the fact that she didn't really deny that it was um. She she actually admitted that it was poorly timed.
Was she also defending? I can't tell if this is what was happening.
Okay, what?
So what? Well, yeah, okay. Cause she's civility politics with that.
Civility politics. So right now what you're doing is telling us you're disgust by saying I didn't even make a fake.
Like just. But I could sit there.
And now you admit it. That's kind of the place gaslighting. It's like you seem minutes ago and now you're like, and I should have been a dick to you. And it's like. So she's telling on herself that I'm just I'm white, white man whispering right now and she's telling on herself and it's unfortunate because she's really, she's putting, you know, she had a valid question, but she even said like I we didn't get to it in executive session. And it's like she kind of like knows she weaponizes transparency rules. And she's.
Well, yeah.
And it's like, are you openly using the microphone to say like you guys keep some shit hush hush behind executive session?
So good points. Let everyone know if you're not familiar with like town meetings, like thank you for bringing that up, Spencer. There are these and they do it for like school committee, all the different meetings where most things are put before the public. And you can comment on there are special instances and I don't even know how exactly. So I'll have to look it up and maybe share with everyone on our website, but there are some like executive sessions where you can pretty much discuss stuff secretly and decide on things that way. So the public has no input or and it's not on the record.
Too late because of whispering.
It's usually like, yeah, it's usually like a half hour before an actual scheduled meeting. So when I was on school committee, I had gone to some and it was about stuff that was usually spicy.
People can't keep.
It was about, well, it was about stuff, you know, like complaints or things that we'd need to handle and we would talk about it amongst ourselves to figure out. You know, so it was kind of like, it could be spicy stuff sometimes.
But the weaponizing, she's acknowledging that's part of the game, first of all.
Oh, yeah, totally. She's saying so. She's saying so much to like, she's like, you paid, like I said, she's saying like you're contributing members of society or however she puts it. As if there's a certain way you have to be eventually.
Yeah, she decides what's she literally even, what'd she say? Uh, what what is deemed suitable for society or is, you know.
Something like that.
Along those lines is like, oh, oh, there it is.
Well, and then she kept saying like, I don't bring up.
Scale that has no way of computing. What does that mean? Because to me, anybody that goes to jail, doesn't rat out another person in their working class circle.
She's just also saying like. Oh, yeah, it is honorable, but she's also like.
Went to jail and you did it all alone. He's a mastermind. He that's how this logic works. It's like this circular like anyways. Yeah.
But she also says like, oh, like I don't bring it up.
Bring up that.
One of you that just like talk. Well, no, you just like to talk about it at every meeting. Like, okay, but that's not true too. I've heard them bring it up.
Everybody knows that off the record, walking around your neighborhood, you're likely talking about it because people bring it up and because they probably don't like the way, it doesn't matter. It's civility politics. It's trash.
Super hard the way and the she's like, I can just sit there and listen to all of you. So you should.
She takes a valid stance of asking legal the question and.
I know I do agree that like I understand like legal should have explained to them what to do because he was missing for like ninety days. Was I not understanding? Does she seem to think that he is being attacked? What was that like? Modern day lynching thing?
She was being like, oh, you guys are acting like this is a modern day lynching.
Okay, I'm like, what does she mean?
And we need to know what we're supposed to do. And you're kind of, I guess that's like not knowing what to do. I I guess that's a fair thing, but like you're telling on.
Yeah, and I'd want to ask legal, I guess, like legal should have told them what to do.
Pro tip for politicians and people in general, like don't ever compare anything to the Holocaust or lynchings like.
Yeah, that's why I didn't understand. I honestly, really, I'm only asking because I did not understand what she meant or who she was even like.
Trying to make a colorful point and try to really put the hammer on, just don't use it like it it's.
I would never say that because I don't, I don't, I don't understand.
That shit and just it it's so ha- it's there's such heinous vile connotations that go along with it like please.
I know. I just feel like you said that in public out loud into a microphone that's recorded. So these are the things, but these are the things that why we're sharing it like Juan did say in his comment, please share with your community like community of Western Mass, we are sharing this with you. And honestly, I welcome at this point, I just want to throw out there.
Like, it's happening everywhere.
No, I know, but I'm just thinking locally, if you're listening locally and you had a meeting where you think we should check it out and maybe talk about it, please email us. Message us on social media. Let us know because it's not just happening here in Holyoke.
And it's a couple of things.
Clearly happening everywhere. There's well, there's more stuff for sure. I'm just throwing that out there as a call to.
That was reported by the Gazette in the last week about Owen.
Oh, yeah, we have to watch that meeting night there. Well, we should watch like the next meeting to see how it goes.
But you know, but long and skinny, I want everybody to uh go ahead and the Gazette, the Hampshire Gazette of all papers. Um, actually reported on it. Basically, um, there's been some issues. Again, inter council people are are having uh grinding sessions.
Yeah, apparently like hardcore in that article.
Let's give everybody the benefit of the doubt, all parties, but right now Owen.
Totally. I'm saying it's it's out there. We'll share it in the Gazette.
Accused and cut off like a bully gets cut off. Uh, another counselor asked asked him to stop calling him and texting him and emailing him. I mean, and anything but on official channels, which all of our government should be doing that anyways. Nobody should be doing anything not an official channel. That's all.
It could be like a rule too, like it could be literally a rule depending on your town.
Even just ethically.
Well, if and if someone asks you like a boundary.
Yeah, then he set a boundary and this is the best way to work with me, yada, yada.
Right on this, exactly.
It's like actually a green line. Yeah, one speed. That's where you want me, you want me to write you a mail and send it by pigeon? Okay, that's weird.
Well, and it's like, if you have a lot of stuff like in one for that job, again, it's a lot of work for a little pay. And if someone's asking you to please just keep it on email so they can stay organized, like just email them. Like, why would you want to like?
I don't want to drop versions, but there's conflict in in East Hampton and two other former counselors, uh reputable members of the community, they they kind of co-sign that they heard. That's what the Gazette was reporting on. They say.
Yeah, so it's out there already.
Like this is, you know, this, this is a pattern. Um, and I guess, you know, the reality is like this is happening in everybody's government and.
Absolutely. Just at different levels, at different times, it's.
People are gonna grind, but it can't be under the radar because this is how bad things happen as far as with your dollars. Uh, it's how things get mismanaged. That's how people get promotions they don't deserve. Yada, 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 yada. All the trickle down effect and it's our money. It's our, it's our business quite literally. I mean, you know, so. But we could refer, you know, but we could stay on Linda Bacon and just talk about how she even, you know, when I said like she does some dog whistles here. You know, in a previous meeting, she threw in a late order to um question about cameras around ballot box uh in in which is like.
Oh, yeah, I think I have that clip too. It does, again, this is one of those things. She sounds reasonable. She sounds.
Question I would ask personally, like, yeah, let's secure something so that way, no matter what. Let's give our clerk's office all the tools they need to like ensure to the public both visibly. Like, yeah, there has to be a visible perspective that they're on it. Like so a camera.
Well, I would want them to keep everything safe, obviously.
Box like that's very clearly like a one of a kind where.
But every town like has that basically will.
But the way she's asking it right before the election and then she makes.
Oh, yeah, super Trumpy.
She makes a refer referral to like people have been saying.
I know, I know the people.
In and it's like there's ways to verify shit and if things look sus. Like I I like it's actually more secure statistically to do the mail in ballot or a drop.
It makes sense, actually.
And you can put a camera on it.
I always vote in person still.
Property. So it's like pretty cut and dry as far as you know, legality goes, like putting a camera there is not a problem.
Yeah, no, it was kind of a weird. It was just a weird ask, but that's.
She made the the the, you know, this, this, the cousin to the um silent majority that Kevin Jordan liked to reference in a previous meeting. Oh, actually, it's a nice segue. So Kevin Jordan in the in the shot spotter meeting from ten four, episode four of ours from October fourth. He made some reference to in the whole conversation about suppressing emails uh uh submissions and making sure we follow the rules on ten speakers that are a minute and a half. Um, while trying to be the parliamentarian, but he's not the parliamentarian. He mentions that like email doesn't count, but he also referred to all the correspondence he gets and he's diligent about responding to his correspondence. These are his words. And you know, that kind of cued our interest where Joanna and I, we were a little, we're kind of like, huh, interesting question. And you know.
I thought it was.
Be kind of fair to, because you know, we could be those really annoying record pullers. They're just pulling every record for fun. Uh, we just like follow the breadcrumbs that people leave for us. And you know, so Joanna is making a cute face if you're not on uh like she's up to no good, like an old timey bad guy, uh kind of Dr. Evil, I guess, but.
So not super old timey.
Yeah, I mean, so he makes some reference about his court, Jordan makes some reference about all the correspondence he gets. And so we're like, you know, I mean, Joanna and I were joking, Occam's razor is like, he's just reading Facebook comments and most of those people aren't probably from here or bots, or they're just dummies that don't know anything or just racist like. I but we're kind of like, well, you know, maybe there's people emailing and there's multiple gun deaths. Like, I'm sure people right in a panic, right? Like, so we decide to uh do a records request and get his emails, which you can do. It's our paper trail. This is why we say everything should be done in email because this is all our business, right? We should be able to audit these people at a moment's notice by keyword and you can when it comes to emails. So we asked, can we get uh a records request for the last, I don't know, was it three or six months regarding gun violence, gun violence?
Oh, I don't think it was that long, not to jump in, but it was like within the week of that meeting, I think, because he was kind of saying people were.
Right, okay. So we get it back and the only one for it was from the Fraternal Order of Police, like.
Well, yeah, it was, there was, and then there was one that was also signed up. Yeah, there was maybe two, but one was like really.
They were just kind of like do anything that will stop gun violence, please. It wasn't.
And they were like, thank you. They were just kind of like, like.
Want to see it. So like we had one person and then there's like seven to ten more emails. Three of them were mine.
Yeah, that were like, no, thank you.
And you know, there are other people too, and it's all public records. If you want, you can go get it. But uh, you know, we, I think we shared a lot of this on our subject tag too, because we're nerdy.
Well, like Owen, yeah, Owen's letter was one of them, I think.
Yeah, we shared it all.
So, yeah.
Yeah, sorry.
But it was definitely just like, okay, so that silent majority thing like stop at root like you first of all, you don't want to receive people's emails who are actually reaching out to you with problems, but you're going to reference people who email you in private. And there's a lot of them, so that should matter. But the people who are actually showing up or wanting their emails read onto the public comment shouldn't matter. Okay, then I'm not following again. And then I have to be like, Spencer, why don't I understand? What's happening?
And you know, the word is, you know, one person says bullshit and then the whole thing devolves. And you know, that was a month ago. So like, maybe I should move past it, but it just like this, all this stuff is just wow.
Well, that's what I mean. And I do understand what's happening, but I'm like, I would, it makes me want to play dumb because the first of all, it's ridiculous that they're using the politi- like the civility politics, the way they're using them like being able to say like, well, I sat there silently while you told me you were had feelings and felt triggered, but right, but I, but now I will flip out on you Karen style and that or Linda style and then I don't know, just kind of the the jabs that are like microaggressions and the dog whistles of just saying like, well, there are so many other people that think this way, but then you don't, but you don't want to hear from the public, but you will use the arguments of those people when it suits you during an argument. So I just feel like it's so backwards and I am really, really thankful for Juan and Israel and Jose and even Tessa and so many and um cocaine and so many other city councils that I do not know all of them in Holyoke and just in every town who is trying to sit there and be there to get work done because it's a really hard, thankless job. But to these other people who are just making things harder, um. I don't know. I think we do need to share and show like, like Juan said, like, why is this acceptable? And why does this person keep getting voted in? Or people like.
Right. And you know, hopefully down the line, we'll have a couple of these people give us a give us thirty minutes of their time to come in and talk and uh talk about their platform and how they organize, you know, whether it's Izzy or Juan or whoever, you know. We're gonna, we're gonna reach out to all of them, I guess, eventually. Um.
Well, yeah, and we've talked to them in the past. That would be nice.
How would you feel if Jordan declared he needed an audience because of all this shit talking I've been doing?
I mean, they can declare.
Joanna will, Joanna and I will play good cop, bad cop. Or like in the sunny uh cue honey and vinegar.
Yeah, I do declare though. I mean, they're not like in any position to declare our time for us, but it's funny that.
Well, not that.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
They, if they made it this far into the episode, uh that's, that's maybe they're an abolitionist now.
Yeah, maybe. And they're like, I shouldn't have done that.
Yeah, unlikely. Um. You know, but the weaponization of people's records is all of it. It's it's I know I'm laughing and chuckling. It's just it's a trauma response for me. Uh, I just don't at some point, you know, because it's like, I I also don't want to make, you know, I don't want to bust in there because like, you know, my instinct is if this was you know, the plague, the recess, you know, playground. Jim, I would put my nose in there and say, what are we fucking doing here? You know, I would try to break it up, but like that.
But Juan's, but Juan's even saying it. That's the problem in general, like the counselors, the counselors need to figure it out or the mayor needs to hold some sort of like mediation because they kind of do need to be able to work together. And sometimes like they fight, like even that fight in the October fourth meeting, which I know we're referencing a lot, but still it was just amazing like. They kind of do need to be able to work together and sometimes like they fight, like even that fight in the October fourth meeting, which I know we're referencing a lot, but still it was just amazing like in terms of what. They'll, they'll do and it's like they just spoke for so long, but we're so worried about the public. Having any say and then just like. Railroaded everyone for like a really long time about stuff that was super.
And let's offer like, let's offer.
Not important.
Let's. Keep this. Keep documenting it because.
That's how I feel and keep sharing it with others how they're acting because it's not acceptable.
Change can happen on the local level a lot faster than it can. As long as you just get coalitions together and basically what we saw in those comments and and the gist of the whole thing, it's, it's. The people with more. Against the people with less and then dividing us on. Uh, you know, red lines and and segregation a- and racism. And that's just the truth. I mean. And it's so baked into our society. It's not this like they don't have like a clan meeting. It's just. The grooves on the record, you know, I'm just going around and around and around.
Well, that's what I mean. Like I don't want to push anyone out and that's why like, I feel like the recordings speak for itself. Like, yes, some of the questions are reasonable, but some of the stuff that you're saying is also.
It's coded, it's dog whistles.
Yeah.
And I wanna. I'm tempted, you know, on a microphone to say like, hey, you know, get turn the other cheek. But it's like, no, this needs to be called out. This is wild, inappropriate. So if they, I think it's just like, remember, we're trying to do something about it. If that means shaming, shame.
I know.
It's not violent. It's like, yo, replay your words. You know.
Well, because I also don't want to take up. A minute and a half every week from public commenters who want to speak because there are some going every week to talk about really important issues. I don't want to have to get on there and be like, can you please treat each other in a manner that's. Conducive to getting work done and not treat some of the members or people of the public with. Complete disdain and then explain things to them as if I'm teaching a course on equity values and inclusion and. That's what I really keep saying. Like, I feel like some of them need to sit through some trainings like. Her civility politics thing like, okay, just because you say it in a kind of nice way doesn't make it all right. And just like personal reflection even like, I don't think that's happening for some of them. And I do understand why um Juan is in Burgos and others are very frustrated at this point. And also, like I said, I don't want to go take up time to explain to people how to get along with each other and make other people feel safe in the community to talk because. They should feel that way as a person voted in as a civil servant. You should. You should want to hear from people.
That should be the skill we're voting for if you're, you know. If we're gonna keep trying this broken and and try to. Incrementally work and incrementalism, you know, I don't buy into it, but you know, it's. I mean, they, it's easy to obstruct, I guess, is the lesson. What it's easy to obstruct and to throw ten temper tantrums and that's what we're seeing. Um, and that's what. Authoritarian types like to do. They don't like to do things. They like to obstruct and.
Right. It's like taking time away from real issues.
And and use the levers as a as a weapon, so. You know, uh. Using the asking, okay, can we, what is the status of the cameras? It's like, you know, we have cameras. There's already. We're like, well, I'm just asking questions. Is it up to date? I don't want to be held accountable. And then, you know, next year where our elections are coming up and I want to make sure they're secure. It's like, that's the Trump dog whistle stuff. It's, it has no place here. Um, I'm sorry, it just doesn't. It's all, i- it's the cousin of election denial. Which undermines the whole thing. And unravels everything because then nothing is truth anymore. And I'm sorry, people can't keep secrets.
No, not very well.
Yeah, but like just like giant systems of, yeah, such repression, there's suppression. There's voted like, you know, just whole person industrial complex is different, disenfranchise people. So it's lots to say that there isn't. Other ways of diluting the vote or taking the vote away. But. I mean, these people just outright aren't hiding it like, well, you don't belong here because you don't. You know, follow our, you know, you didn't do it the right way.
Well, yeah, so that's like something that does stand out, did stand out to me because it's like, okay, well. Now she's gonna have a list in her head of like, what's the appropriate way to come out of like. Incarceration and how you'd act in society. And that's a big one. Like it's she, you are not the judge and jury of everyone else's existence and life. And like, we have such a punitive disgusting view. On how people should act and how people should be. And it's just so, it's so baked in, like you said, it's just programmed in.
It's how government should be approached. That's, that's how big, that's how we're.
Yeah.
Our culture, our white supremacy, American, Western, whatever you want to call it. It's just, it's about who can be the bigger bully. And, you know, don't kid yourselves, people like the Nazis took a lot of ideas from the Jim Crow laws. That's the, that was the model for the Nuremberg laws or. And it's just. We, we have it so baked in, it takes care of itself. And this, it, it all goes tied back. So like, please do, if you have any. Like curiosities about the larger concepts here at play and how it plays into Linda Bacon. I mean, this conflict, this. Bully mentality is how it maintains itself. And in her head, she thinks she's like the defender of democracy by being a jerk.
Well, and she may not think she's being a jerk, like she think, and some of her questions are reasonable, like. She just maybe like, I'm not trying even to defend her because I'm trying to just understand some of our other people and our neighbors and councillors and how they act like. I believe she probably is trying to be civil in her own way and she is trying to give people their time and listen to them. I'm just. The stuff she's saying, even if she's not aware of it, is not all right. And like. Even if that stuff's baked in because you're older, like there's a point where it's just, it's not okay. You need to be called out. You need to self reflect and really. Again, I do think like the president of the council or the mayor should be like. I don't know, maybe stepping in and meeting with some of them. It's just.
Maybe they are, maybe.
Just. And he, I know, I just don't see that happening.
But this is why, you know, local politics matters like as.
Yeah, that's why you should be listening.
If you're benevolent, uh, not benevolent, but if you're a compassionate person. Do you, these are our employees. So like.
Well, yeah, they are doing work for like.
Like, I don't want the people that. Are like responsible to like run my city to be unhappy either. So we have to figure something the fuck out. Like just down to like a person to person.
Well, and you don't have to like each other, but you don't have to make like attacks on each other. And I think. When it becomes like what Juan's suggesting that like, it's just taking time away from like real work to like basically have fights within like the chambers. There's a problem. And again, I don't think it's isolated to Holyoke. So in your own town, if you have stuff going on, please let us know and we'll cover it. I think. It's just being aware, like we mentioned East Hampton, being aware that this stuff does go on. And you don't have to like silently just sit there and let it continue. I guess there, that's the other.
Framing doesn't always have to be intergovernment. It can be. How the majority of the body. Treats out of towners or how they treat um or talk about or frame certain sides of town.
Mm hmm. And some towns do, do, do better than others. I will say that.
Absolutely. But when it's like a place that's small, that has a pretty he- hegemonic, you know. Uh, population, you know, all the same types of people like places north of UMass, it's kind of like all professors like in their little like.
Yeah, like my town in Montague, like we don't, we're, we have like a lot more like. We don't feel, I don't feel afraid to talk there, but that we don't, we don't always allow out of town comment. I think at public meetings, some we do. But um, they definitely are more welcoming to hear what you have to say. They do push civility politics, so. But they're more like, they're way warm, way more welcoming than the Holyoke.
This is our roundabout way. So if you're listening in Holyoke, this is happening. Tell your friends, share what Juan said. Um, we're going to share clips of it. Um, we're finally getting our, our video game together. So thank you for being patient, um, you know. Uh, with all that stuff, uh, check us out on social media. We need to share this stuff. It needs to get out there. Just so people know what's going on so they can, you know, put pressure on these people. They can correspond with them. They can pick it, whatever you deem.
Or change your vote when the times come to vote like Juan said, like some of these people keep getting voted in. And this is what they're doing with their time and with your money.
Large, maybe your councillor, like my councillor Juan, like, yeah, I disagree with him on the police sometimes like.
And that's fine, but he's still pretty good about like.
You know, I have a hard time, but yeah, he gives me a lot of runway.
Yeah, he would listen to any constituent, I think.
He doesn't outright disagree with me. I think he's just more of a dealmaker than me.
Like he said in his statement, he's just, he's very, he's someone who is actually very pleasant and willing to work with others. So I'm not saying you're not that person. It's just. He's, I think, the, I think that's the part of him that's so frustrated is. He's someone that's usually can get along with and work with others. So if that's not happening with these, some of these people on the council for him, that's, that's a red flag, I think.
You know, that what I was.
He's a good guy. Like, I really like him.
People in my position say you get along with, you know, you, your councillor and you want to be politically motivated or activated or an activist for a cause. Maybe a councillor at large or another position that, you know, you could help organize all over the city as opposed to just in your neighborhood or not.
Well, and also just any local, any local involvement, if you're interested is awesome. It's a lot of work.
Officially politically, actually, we should be trying to build up other systems that we can. Maintain without the, the political structure having to get.
Yeah, mu- mutually project, projects are awesome too, and there are a ton in Western Mass.
Uh, if you ever do, there's always a way you can, you can ask questions, you can email them. Some people are just. Even if they're ghouls, they like to engage. It's kind of their pastime. So you might, they might. Tell you more about them and you might. Learn something that maybe they're not as ghoulish as you think they are. Or maybe they're more ghoulish you ever could imagine. So it's, it's not a bad thing to get to know these people because at the end of the day, even if you think it's bullshit and electoralism doesn't work or whatever, it's like, well, they're still kind of like. Our little representatives to the feudal lords, so like. Try, try in your way, you know, and if that means supporting people that do that thing, you know, that's cool too, like. Anyway.
I mean, if, yeah, like I agree, it's for local stuff, it's. It really is like our local community impacted by these people. So I think. If, if you really want to make a difference, these are places and. Ways to have like more of an impact than you can when you maybe think of. Your vote in the federal general election, which I'm not saying don't vote. I'm just saying. You can really see action at the local level.
So that's, that's pretty much all we, you know, have time for, talking about ghoulish shit and and hopefully some hope came out of this where it's like, you can just. Literally listen to their words, record it and play it back for them or or reshare things like. Um, local people are are posting, whether they're random people on the internet or um. Influencers or content creators like Joanna and myself, uh, the weed out. Um, we're, we're, want to remind everybody that our sub stack, uh, we were talking about. Uh, the first amendment issues at a place like Holyoke and how um. This pretty much applies to every city council. There's a lot of rumblings in places all over the Western Mass and the country that we see from other local reporters. Um. And the reality is, it's just. Uh, you know, basically, you just gotta watch them and you gotta engage somehow. Um. Joanna, please, any final thoughts?
Completely agree. That's why we shared this, um, and why we covered the October fourth meeting. Um, I do watch other town meetings and I think. The only thing I'll say about Holyoke that's a little bit more specific to Holyoke would be, and I think we've made, maybe mentioned it before. Like in Greenfield, they still have their problems, completely have issues during the meetings, but at the beginning, there's no like. Forced pledge allegiance. It's optional and they don't do like the God bless a million. Different ways, at least I know they only do it three ways in Holyoke, but they don't like put that on to people. So there are different. Styles in different towns, but again, just I would say if you can't make it. In person or on Zoom, you can always watch a meeting later. The way we found out about this meeting was because someone, um. We know, we do know them in person, but we met them on Twitter, kind of told us about the, the October eighteenth meeting. And so we watched it because we weren't, I think maybe you went Spence, but I wasn't able to make that meeting. Um, so I watched it on, um, once it was recorded. So there's lots of ways to even just keep kind of like an eye on what's going on. In your community too. And I think that's why we're sharing what we share, just kind of show people. The different ways that we kind of pay attention and are able to see what.
And we want to encourage other people to, to engage in this type of uh. Guerrilla journalism, guerrilla punditry, I don't know what else to call it, but it's just, it's, it's important. And I feel like this is the sneaky thing about local politics. There is nobody overseeing it in a critical like. Sort of way, and there's barely any actual journalism, let alone. Uh, anybody being like, yo, this is a dog whistle. Yo, this is a class's take. Yo, this person, these, these three councillors in, in Holyoke clearly don't want to have public comment. So, so it's so egregious that other parts of the government are accusing them.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's crazy. You're right. And like.
Porter and leaked it to them. No, they're like, wrote it on official letterhead, like, hey, you all have a problem on your side of the building.
You're right. And I think it's crazy too, because I think in the past. You're, I think there would have been reporters, maybe that like covered city council meetings, but that's, that time is gone really, so. We're, we're doing, we're out here doing that work.
One duty you can do if you are interested in any of this and maybe you like to write or maybe you like to do. Or maybe you're interested in any more raw journalism, like more investigative type stuff. I mean, you can just do it. And there's outlets popping up like the weed out. It's not just us. There's other outlets and we can collaborate and. Um, you know, that, it's just do it. If you have that skill and you enjoy it. You know, we can all work together because weeding out the, the gar- the garbage is uh, takes time, takes a lot of eyes, takes a lot of hands and. We can do it. We can make it a better place. Uh, it doesn't always have to be negative.
No, and that's, I mean, that's why. We're not try, some of the councillors are amazing. Like I said, thank you to all of the councillors out there serving like who do. Really focus on the community. It's just, I think we should point out when there's stuff going on that's a little. Upsetting for the people who are there doing.
And when you're anti racist, you have to. Put these racist tropes to task when they come up. So.
I agree.
Let's just, that's what we have to do. And unfortunately, these small communities are not immune from it. This is where it happens. And this is just the reality and we can tackle this stuff at home. It's possible. So. Uh, appreciate everybody listening to us and uh, give us a new chance uh, on, on, on this. Story that may seem unrelated uh, to your town, but maybe, maybe it applies or maybe it reminds you of something and. Again, as always, you know, uh. Have a good rest of your day. Check us out on our website. I'll follow our citations for that. We, we referenced stats, et cetera. Um, we like to bring receipts and, you know, check out our Patreon, all our social media. We'd love to have you and interact with you. And Joanna, do you have anything to say to the audience before we sign off for the day?
Um, just take care, everybody.
All right, great. Have a good, uh, have a good rest of your, whatever it is and. Thank you. Bye.